I will turn it over immediately to Dr. Burnham to confirm member access.
Evening, everyone. As a preliminary matter, this is Dr. Burnham, Superintendent of Schools. I will do a roll call to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Chairperson Wendy Bertrand.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Carol Ashambo.
Yes.
Secretary Laura Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Brian Leighton.
Yes.
Ms. Sophie Shapiro.
Yes.
And I don't believe we have a student representative with us, at least I had anyway. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Recording Secretary, Ms. Susan Summers.
Yes.
Business Manager, Mr. Michael Cassidy.
Yes.
And Mr. Londa is joining now. Ms. Londa, can you hear us?
I can.
Very good. Thank you. I'll turn it back to you, Mrs. Bertrand.
Thank you. Good evening. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and will be broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel at a later time, and this meeting of the Lunenburg School Committee is being conducted remotely. The town of Lunenburg, in response to the COVID-19 coronavirus, is currently following the guidance from the Lunenburg Board of Health, Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and the CDC regarding the virus and steps communities can take to prevent the spread. And all town facilities are currently closed to the public. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law GL 30A, Section 20, all public meetings are being conducted remotely. The order, which you can find posted on the town website on the COVID-19 Information Center page, accessed through the town manager's webpage, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Lunenburg School Committee is convening by telephone conference, video conference, via Zoom app as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Meeting business ground rules. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda, but before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, Wendy Bertrand, the chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold off until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and then state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. And for items with public comment, after members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment as follows. The chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses, and then we'll call on each by name and afford up to three minutes per speaker for any comments. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. So our first item on the agenda tonight is is Chair's Report, and I do not have a specific Chair's Report, so we will move on to public comment. And this public comment is for agenda items. So if I'm scrolling down the line here looking to see, I don't don't see any hands raised for that public comment. One more scroll across. So with no public comment, we will move on. For approving meeting minutes, I don't think we have any meeting minutes to approve tonight.
No.
So next on the agenda would be reviewing and approving line item transfers, and we do have a line item transfer.
We do. So this evening, there's a request to transfer $5,799.96 from the unemployment compensation line to the collaborative tuitions line. This request will support additional services needed for an out-of-district student placed at the Keystone Collaborative.
If there are no questions from the committee, I'll take a motion. Ms. Kelly.
This is Laura Kelly, and I'll make a motion to approve this line item request.
Is there a second? Ms. Shapiro.
Sophie Shapiro, and I'll second that motion.
If we roll call?
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes. Thank you. Next up is our superintendent's report.
So this evening, I want to make you aware that we have been experiencing some internet disruption at the middle high school, and I want to provide you a little bit of an update on that. We fully recognize that interruption to internet service right now does have a significant impact on the teaching and learning. As you know, we do have some students who are fully remote, who are accessing their classroom at the middle or high school via internet. This is our top priority at the moment. We're working on this until it is resolved. We have been working with a network consultant as well as our own IT team, including consulting with members of the IT department servicing the town. We are trying to find the root cause of this persistent network issue that we've been experiencing. We have taken some temporary measures to reduce traffic on the network. This includes shutting down our guest Wi-Fi and temporarily shutting down a Google syncing feature. It's our hope that this will stabilize things for the time being until we can determine the root cause and remedy that. We have engaged Signet, the vendor that designed and implemented the network infrastructure at the middle high school, to help us troubleshoot and find the root cause. They will be in working with us tomorrow morning. Mr. Santry and Mr. McGrath will be making students and families aware of this issue and that we are working to address the issue as quickly as we possibly can. Little bit of an MCAS update. This year, there have been some modifications to the typical testing. There will be one test session per content area. Typically, there are two or three, depending on the content area. Students will be offered a free breakfast on testing days before we begin with the testing. Currently, the high school is still working to finalize dates for the testing. Right now, I can give you tentative dates for the middle school and Turkey Hill. At the middle school, students will be testing in their homerooms, and they'll remain there until testing is completed, unless, of course, they are assigned to small groups as per their IEP. On Monday, May 24th, grades six, seven, and eight are tentatively scheduled to test in ELA. Tuesday, May 25th, grades six, seven, and eight will test in math. Wednesday, May 26th, grade eight will test in science, technology, and engineering. And makeup testing at the middle school will be completed June 1st, 2nd, and 3rd. At Turkey Hill, the students also will take tests in their homerooms, again, unless assigned to small groups in accordance with their IEP. On Tuesday, May 11th, grade three will test ELA. Wednesday, the 12th, grade four will test ELA. Monday, May 17th, grade five will test ELA. And ELA makeups will be administered between Tuesday, May 18th and Friday, May 21st. On Tuesday, the 25th, grade three will test math. On the 26th, grade four. And on Thursday, the 27th, grade five. Math makeups will be administered Tuesday through Friday, June 1st through the 4th. And on Tuesday, June 8th, grade five will test in science, and science makeups will be administered on Wednesday, June 9th. The latest information from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is that fully remote students will be allowed to test at home on their school-issued Chromebook and the TestNav app. And there is actually a training tomorrow at 10 o'clock to review with principals the protocols for the testing remote students. There's been a change to quarantine protocols that has come from multiple sources, actually. It was relayed to us through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed. But this update to quarantine guidance for close contacts was approved by the Executive Office of Health and Human Services after consultation with the Governor's Medical Advisory Board on COVID-19 and other medical advisors. And this updated guidance is effective immediately. Close contacts who were exposed to a COVID-19 positive individual in the classroom or on the bus while both individuals were masked do not have to quarantine unless they were within three feet of distance from the COVID-19 positive individual for a total of 15 minutes during a 24-hour period. This does not apply if someone was identified as a close contact outside of the classroom or the bus. As an example, this does not apply in sports or extracurriculars or lunch. Or should there be a case that masks were not worn by both persons at the time of exposure? All other close contacts would follow the standard protocol and the standard protocol for when a close contact might return to school. Update on the Class of 2021. As I indicated at our last meeting, the Mass Department of Public Health informed school nurses that they should look to the local Board of Health to determine if and when it would be safe to hold a prom. At the last meeting of the Board of Health, the Class of 2021 Prom was discussed, and the Board of Health cannot recommend that the school host such an event. As a result, the Class of 2021 will come before you next month, next meeting if possible, to request release of their funds, as did the Class of 2020. They would be able then to use these funds to hold a class event sometime post-graduation. The Department of Ed has also released updated guidance on graduation that was released today. We haven't thoroughly reviewed the guidance that came out today. However, based on the previous guidance, we know that we would be able to hold a graduation in the same manner as last year. We will definitely review the guidance that was released today to determine if and how we might be able to modify that sort of plan for the graduation in alignment with the new guidance. And Mr. McGrath is working with the class advisors and the class officers in planning other traditional senior events. And of course, with the appropriate safety protocols in place. And Mr. McGrath will communicate to senior students and families when plans have been finalized for all of those senior events. And lastly, an update on school choice. We will not be holding a lottery for school choice. We had four applicants for grade nine. As you recall, we approved five seats for grade nine. We had three applicants for grade 10, and again, we had approved five seats for grade 10. The applicants have been notified that their application has been approved, and we are now waiting for those applicants to indicate that they are, in fact, going to accept the seat. This means that we, if all accept the seat, we will still have one seat open in grade nine and two seats open in grade 10. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Thank you. Next would be student representatives' report. I don't I'm just scanning to see. It does not look like we have a student representative. So on to new business. My Cap.
So we had placed this item on the agenda, and Mrs. Sue Cavioli, Department Head of the High School Guidance Department, was planning to give you a presentation and an overview of My Cap. Unfortunately, she contacted us a little bit earlier today and indicated that she would be unable to make this evening's presentation. So we will add that item to our next meeting's agenda.
Thank you. Under Action Items, Resolutions. Now, Dr. Burnham, do you want to give some context around this and then the committee?
Sure. So
Can read?
This is the time of year that we have a teacher appreciation recognition time, and there are days to recognize our nurses and our paraprofessionals. And you might recall, last year at one of our meetings, we read several resolutions, one for each different category of employee that was being recognized and appreciated for all the work that they do for us here in the district. We thought that we would actually combine into one resolution this year, recognition for all of the employees. As you know, this has been an extraordinary year, and every single category of employee in the district has really had to modify the way they work. And they've given their heart and soul this year to make sure that we could keep schools open and keep kids learning. And I am truly appreciative of all the effort on the part of all of our staff in the district. We're almost there. We have seven weeks until the last day of school. And they really, honestly, the entire district has done an extraordinary job of teaching and learning this year and keeping our buildings open for our kiddos. So I'll turn it over to you for the resolution.
Excellent. So as a committee, we will all read parts of this. I'll begin Lunenburg Public Schools' Resolutions. Whereas teachers mold future citizens through guidance and education, teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching students, and performing community service. And our community recognizes and supports its teachers in educating the children of this community. Therefore, be it resolved that the Lunenburg School Committee proclaim May 3rd through May 7th, 2021, to be National Teacher Appreciation Week, and May 4th to be National Teacher Appreciation Day.
Whereas principals are expected to be educational visionaries, instructional leaders, assessment experts, disciplinarians, community builders, public relations experts, et cetera, entrusted with the education and development of young people, the most valuable resource. Principals set the academic tone for their schools and work collaboratively with teachers to develop and maintain high curriculum standards and set performance goals and objectives for schools to achieve educational excellence. Therefore, be it resolved in honor of the service of all principals and to recognize the importance of their school leadership so that every child has access to a high-quality education, the day of May 1st is hereby designated in Lunenburg to be National Principals' Day.
Whereas school nurses support the health and educational success of children and youth by providing access to care, the school community celebrates and acknowledges the accomplishments of school nurses and their efforts of meeting the needs of today's students by improving the delivery of healthcare in our schools and offers gratitude for the district's school nurses who contribute to our local communities by helping students stay healthy in school and ready to learn. Therefore, be it resolved that the Lunenburg School Committee proclaim May 6th through the 12th, 2021, to be School Nurses' Week and strongly encourages all members of our community to join with it, personally expressing appreciation to our nurses for their dedication and devotion to their work.
Whereas paraprofessionals play a vital role in the successful operation of our school district and the dedicated and valuable contributions of all the fine people who fill these important positions are integral to the successful daily operation of our public schools. Therefore, be it resolved that the Lunenburg School Committee proclaim April 2nd, 2021, to be Paraprofessional Appreciation Day.
Whereas the staff of the district's school meals and nutrition department are committed to providing helpful nutritious meals to the district's children, and the men and women who prepare and serve school meals help nurture our children through their daily interaction and support. Therefore, be it resolved that the Lunenburg School District expresses its deep appreciation to these valuable food service employees and commends their good work on behalf of the children the day of Friday, May 7th, 2021, as School Lunchero Day.
Whereas administrative professionals in the Lunenburg Public Schools play key roles, there are many responsibilities and are crucial to the efficient functioning and smooth running of day-to-day operations as they assist educators, principals, students, and parents. Therefore, be it resolved that Administrative Professionals' Day be observed on April 21st, 2021.
Whereas our custodians are constantly responsible for all Lunenburg Public School facilities. They are the first employees to arrive in the morning and the last employees to leave at night, and their contribution is critical in allowing for the smooth daily operation of the school. Therefore, be it resolved, the School Committee of the Lunenburg Public Schools, on behalf of all students and personnel, does hereby proclaim the day of October 2nd, 2021, as Custodian Appreciation Day for Lunenburg Public Schools, urging all parents, students, and employees to join in congratulating all custodians for jobs well done and in saying thank you.
Whereas coaches represent stability, consistency, and direction in the lives of many athletes. A coach is a friend, a mentor, and an advocate that helps demonstrate to the athletes teamwork, discipline, and healthy attitude toward competition. Therefore, be it resolved that the designation of October 6th, 2021, as National Coaches' Day, to raise public awareness about the important and significant role that coaches play in the lives of millions of people in the United States.
Whereas school bus drivers are required to undergo extensive training to improve their knowledge and skills as a way to ensure the safety and well-being of students. The position of a school bus driver requires tremendous responsibility in transporting Massachusetts students through inclement weather conditions and various traffic situations. Therefore, be it resolved that the Lunenburg School Committee proclaims February 22nd, 2021, to be Bus Driver Appreciation Day and strongly encourages all members of our community to join and personally expressing appreciation to our bus drivers for their dedication and devotion to their work.
Whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department, and that members of our department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, protecting them against violence or disorder, and protecting the innocent against deception in the weak against oppression or intimidation. Therefore, be it resolved, proclaim the week of May 10th, 2021, to be National Police Officers' Week.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you to not only all of our Lunenburg Public School staff, but as well as our community officers as well. So we will sign this, Dr. Burnham?
Thank you very much.
Is this something that we can post or will be posted somewhere on the website?
Yes, and we'll make sure
Because some of these dates are obviously, you know, still to come, so.
Right. We will make sure that we share this out district-wide as well.
Thank you. Moving on, permission to post.
And I would invite Mr. Cassidy to discuss this one.
Good evening, everyone. Mike Cassidy, Business Manager, HR Director. In front of the School Committee, the evening are two positions that we are requesting to post. Both positions will not be impacting the local budget at all, so I want to start by saying that. The first position, if you recall, this is a part-time psychologist position was talked about in our capital hiring plan during our budget hearings. Unfortunately, our part-time psychologist, who is a retiree, just wants to spend some more time at home and get some rest. So she's resigning from her position, so that position is going to become open. And we're looking to make that a full-time position instead of a part-time position to address an increased workload in the fall. We're anticipating an increased workload in the fall. In addition, I think for the HR office, it will be a good recruiting tool to have a full-time position. These are very difficult positions to staff and to hire for, and most psychologists are looking for full-time positions. The second position is a social worker position, so we're expanding our view of what a social worker looks like in the schools over the next few years. So right now, we have a social worker at the high school, and then there's one at the being converted from a guidance counselor to a social worker at the primary school. We are proposing two additional social workers, one at Turkey Hill and one at the middle school. These are this would basically provide a social worker in every single school for the next three years. We are looking to be using SIR grant, SIR II grant, and SIR III funding to support the salaries for these two positions moving forward. So those are the positions that are in front of you this evening. I think it's very, very important that I provide an update to the School Committee regarding SIR III funds. The district has not received our allocation yet, and we're waiting for the state to disseminate that information. It's going to be a significant amount that we're going to be using over the next three years. So that's why we're proposing that the finding for the social worker comes out of the of the SIR III grant and not the local funds. So these are positions, the social worker positions are positions that the district leadership team has talked about implementing. And though we don't know the amount, which we know will be substantial, we will be, if posted, will put pending grant funding, which we know there's an award coming, and we're going to budget it, but just as a precautionary measure, we'll put that in the posting moving forward. And just give the committee assurance that for the social worker positions, we will not appoint until we know the exact amount moving forward. So those are the positions that are in front of the committee tonight. We are looking for your support moving forward and blessing the moving forward to post these positions as soon as possible. Thank you.
So I would just want to add to that a little bit more context. These positions are going to be grant-funded. Every district is going to be receiving these grant monies. And these grant monies, we anticipate, are going to have to be used to target specific things. Yes, COVID-related safety, we anticipate that Y- yes, COVID-related safety, we anticipate that that will still be an allowable expense. But they will be designed to target academic intervention as well as behavioral health. Every district is going to be looking for these positions. So we feel that if we can post them now, even though we don't have the exact grant allocation yet for the ESER 3. We can get the process underway, we can get applications coming in during an open window for applications. And then initiate the process um, for interviews and, and so forth. Again, as Mr. Cassidy already indicated, we would not make any appointment until we knew for sure what that grant funding is for ESER 3. Again, for a bigger context. When we developed the budget and brought forward the budget, we added a second social worker in the local budget. We knew we couldn't fund a social worker for every building in the local budget. So based on what we knew we would have to work within the local budget. We, we recommended our, our base level staffing need to meet the needs that we anticipate are coming. Then with the ESER 2 grant that came in, that's when we came back and said, okay, we, we have some additional funding. We would like to make this uh, staffing in behavioral health a little more robust. And we suggested that we would use grant funding to hire a third social worker that would split between middle school and Turkey Hill. Now that we know that there's another round of grant money coming. We're now layering on a, a fourth social worker so that now each school. Will have their own dedicated full-time social worker. Additionally, I just want to let you know that we have already uh, been engaging in conversations. Around what is the most robust support staffing? That we can put in place for the behavioral health and the academic supports. And, and we're talking about what that structure would look like, we're talking about. For academics, we're looking at additional intervention staff during the school day. We're looking at additional opportunities for after-school intervention supports. For summer program supports beyond this summer. So we're looking to use the monies that are coming in the way that they're being targeted. We're being asked to spend those monies. In the best way possible to um, to have, you know, a, a positive impact. Uh, for all of our students, whether it be academic or mental health. Um, to recover from as best we can from, from any negative impact. That the kids have experienced due to this COVID uh, situation in the last school year and last spring. So we don't have before you this evening other positions that we would like to post. Because we would like to be sure what the allocation is going to be and then map out the multi-year expenses. Uh, for staffing and other resources in order to achieve the goals that I've just uh, targeted for you. So as soon as we, we have more information on the ESER 3, we will be back before you to um. Again, request additional staffing uh, positions to be posted, to be funded with those, those grant monies. But just know that we're already in conversation and planning how to make supports even more robust and more impactful with this next wave of funding.
Thank you. Are you, so. With that context, I, I'll, I'll see if the committee has any other questions and then we can, I will accept a motion. You wanted us to accept that, yes?
Yes, please approve permission for us to post those two.
Yes.
Positions.
Both, both, yes. So, Committee, if there are no other questions. Um, I will take a motion. Ms. Arshinbaum?
Um, I would like to move that we accept the proposal for the permission to post. For the psychologist and social worker positions as presented.
Mr. Leighton, a second?
Second the motion.
Roll call vote?
Ms. Shapiro? Yes. Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Arshinbaum?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the primary fire alarm update.
So I would invite um, Mr. Londa to provide this update for you.
Uh, thank you, John Londa, Director of Facilities. Uh, so uh, as a quick intro, uh, we have the fire alarm system at the primary school that we've been looking to upgrade. Uh, it is sixteen years old and is no longer supported by. Uh, by Siemens Corporations that, that, that bought uh, Faraday Corporation. So we're looking to try to get that uh, upgraded and the alarm system has had, had issues pretty much uh. With operations during extreme cold weather, uh, which has been forcing us to kind of run the heat uh, seven days a week. Uh, at a higher level than we would like. And so we're, back in March, I put together a com- a very detailed description of the fire alarm system. And sent that out to uh, Norrell Service Company. Uh, Norrell is a company that's on the Massachusetts statewide contract for tradespersons. Uh, this is a TRD 03, uh, and they are, that contract allows them to go ahead and do, do work for, for, on fire. Fire uh, alarm systems uh, under this package of uh, vendors. Uh, so I asked them that, based on that detailed description, that email, uh, to put together our, our price. And uh, they did, the, the, what, what they were looking at is replacing all of the notification side in the main panel. Of the fire alarm system and leaving all of the uh, all of the uh. The notification side alone, but just to replacing anything that would trigger an alarm, so smoke detectors, heat detectors. Uh, and any other kind of modules that we have, pulse stations. Um, so that's what they, they did, they came back, I, I got this quote back from them. I, yesterday, and then it was updated, updated today, so the cost to have them come and upgrade this system. Would be, uh, they're quoting it as sixty-three thousand ninety-three dollars and five cents. Um, because this is renovation type work and it is based upon. Uh, you know, not them doing a survey, me, me doing the survey. Uh, I would recommend that, you know, that there at least be a five percent contingency. Uh, carried so that, you know, in event that we find out the counts are off slightly that we're not, you know. We're not looking for money to try to finish out the project. Uh, five percent would be three thousand, uh, one hundred and fifty-five dollars. Uh, so I'm looking at the total cost of this being somewhere around sixty-six thousand, two hundred and forty-eight. Uh, with that five percent contingency, uh, we do have twenty-five thousand. Uh, that was a earmark in the state budget for FY21. Um, and so we would look to use that, so the additional uh, cost that we're looking to try to cover is forty-one thousand, two forty-eight. Uh, the, uh, the quote that I got from Norrell uh, is, is a turnkey type of proposal. Uh, they would come in and replace the main control panel. Uh, all the smokes, the heats and the duct detectors and any of the ascent, uh, other parts that are, of that included. Any relays and monitors, uh, they would do the, the programming, uh, they would coordinate uh. With all the engineering and permits. And then they would do a, a pre-test of the system and then do a final NFPA uh, record of completion on, on the system. Uh, the listing of materials that they gave me, uh, they provided me the initial, just the uh. Initial uh, cut sheet on the main panel, which is going to be, would be an auto-call for 10 panel. Uh, auto-call uh, is, is a distributor's uh, trademark for us. Where, where it's essentially is a simplex system. And simplex were, has been around for quite a while, I'm familiar with that. So um, this looks like a, a pretty good proposal. I am going to go review all of the uh, the cut sheets and all the uh, devices that they're, they're including in this proposal. But initial look, this looks like a really solid proposal, something that we could do. Uh, here in FY21 to, to resolve this issue about having a firearm system that is no longer supported. Uh, sixteen years under operation and uh, and hopefully resolve the, the issues with uh, poor performance and under cold weather. Uh, and as far as, you know, besides obviously taking care of all that, uh, we would go back to a uh, a normal, you know. Uh, heating schedule in the building where we'd only be going, you know, five days a week. And my, my sense is that's, that's not huge savings, but it's probably two thousand, five hundred to three thousand dollars a year. Uh, if we're not having to try to bring the building fully up to temperature on Saturdays and Sundays. Um, so that's, that's the update on where we are. Um, you know, it's a, it's the same project that we proposed to capital planning. Um, yeah, complete, um, but they clearly have come in at a, at a lower cost than I had initially estimated based upon my uh, my Johnson Control Estimate. From uh, from last year. Um, other, does everybody have any questions about this, about uh, estimated costs in uh? Uh, the, the proposal?
Ms. Arshinbaum?
Yeah, I just, I just have a, a question. Um, obviously, this is good news that it would come in lower than you had anticipated previously. But my question, I guess, is um, the forty-one thousand dollars, would that come from maintenance somewhere? Where would that come from?
Uh, so in the, the main is budget is pretty much going to be completely expanded this year on, on its normal. And we don't typically have that kind of funds readily available. Uh, so we would be looking for either, either somewhere out of capital planning or if the school, school budget has something excess at the end of the. End of the school year that, that we could tap in to make that happen.
So capital planning, that would have to wait for the next go-round for the next fiscal year then?
Yeah, if, if it waited the next year, there's, uh, it's not clear that the twenty-five thousand would, would be available next year, so. It would, we, we would then be looking for, for that amount for. Uh, you know, for, not this summer, but for next summer.
Okay. Any other questions from the committee? Thank you, Mr. Londa. Moving on, strategy for in, uh, Improvement Progress Report.
Going to provide you an update on uh, some of the work that's been ongoing. Uh, under our action plans for our strategy for continuous improvement. I want to thank each of you for spending some time with me in the last couple of weeks. Uh, give me an opportunity to um, walk through with you um. And talk, talk about a lot of the work that's been ongoing this year as well as um, where we anticipate our priority focus will be for next year. Uh, but I thought I would, uh, for the benefit of the community, also provide a brief uh, update on, on each of the areas. So under the Transforming Teaching and Learning Goal Area. Um, we, Priority One was to establish effective teams to lead essential work uh, of teaching and learning. Develop high-quality, rigorous, and relevant and enriching curricula. With a priority focus on literacy and social emotional learning. Identification and communication of expectations for demonstration of high-quality teaching and learning competencies. And implementation of effective instructional practices, interventions, communication, and professional development. So work has been ongoing this year with the vertical teams. Um, teachers have met monthly uh, to engage in dialogue around um, our curriculum. As you know, this year, the, the school year was uh, reduced from a hundred and eighty days to a hundred and seventy days. So teachers have been making adjustments to um, pacing, scope and sequence uh, throughout the year. But they've been doing so in collaboration with teachers from receiving or sending grades. So that all the teachers know what adjustments were made this year so that they're better prepared. For anticipating what impact that might have on adjustments that may be needed for their curriculum at their grade level or content area next year. We have created uh, scope and sequence maps and an assessment schedule for each of our buildings. And that work, again, is ongoing, we continue to update those documents. Our ELA vertical team participated in uh, database research by reviewing the sections of the Department of EdMas Literacy Guide. In the areas of phonics K2 and vocabulary 3.5. And team members identified areas of congruence and gaps in our current programming. The ELA team examined report evaluating um, current ELA uh, program to identify any additional gaps. And make recommendations for scope and sequence, assessment, resources. Future professional uh, development needs as well as uh, current research. And uh, obviously, teachers had an opportunity to, to provide their input from their experience in the classroom as well. The math vertical team uh, worked to review shifts in mathematics and identify strengths and areas for improvement. In instruction and resources, and as I've mentioned in previous meetings. We're going to be looking to pilot some math uh, curriculum programs. And potentially be adopting one uh, for, for future use. We look to start that work in the fall. Um. We have continued to assess the behavioral health needs of the district. Um, as you know, we established building-based behavioral health. Um, support teams uh, this year to identify and provide mental health supports within each building. Our behavioral health coordinator was a new position this year that was a stipended position. Um, and I, I feel that that position has been particularly beneficial uh, this year in overseeing and coordinating. Um, the needs of, of each of the buildings as well as uh, starting to um. Find ways to unify across the district the ways in which we're gathering data in this particular area. Uh, for student supports and ways to archive that data that would be um, confidential. Um, as you know, we have continued with the universal mental health screenings for depression and anxiety. Uh, this year, we expanded to the middle school as well. Uh, and our wellness advisory committee uh, is working to complete an assessment of the wellness policy and its implementation in each of the schools. Relative to uh, professional development needs and organization of quality professional development opportunities. All of our PD days for this year were planned and organized largely by um. Annika Scott in the role of Director of Teaching and Learning and Rebecca Hyde in the role of Title I Coordinator. Um, the Professional Development Committee, though, uh, does conducted a needs assessment survey. Of the faculty so that they also have input as to um, what types of professional development would be uh, of particular interest. To them and that, that survey process is going to become an annual. Source of. Feedback for, for the PD committee in their planning purposes. Feedback for for the PD committee in their planning purposes. Um, this year for our second year, we collaborated in a joint conference PD day in November on Election Day. With North Middlesex Regional School District. And we did uh work jointly to bring in a keynote speaker for the event uh this year as well. And this year, obviously, the entire conference was conducted virtually for safety reasons. So I I congratulations to the PD committee, they've uh continued to do a really fine job of um coordinating and organizing. Valuable PD for our for our teachers this year, we also um had those um stipended positions of instructional technology trainers. These teachers in the stipended positions created and delivered uh instructional technology workshops for our teachers. Um, through the year and um they did offer tech drop in times on our Mondays. So you know, most of the year, we were working on a fully remote Monday with um. Uh, online teaching in the morning and prep time for teachers in the afternoon. And those um drop in times were scheduled during that portion of the day and optional for teachers to take advantage of. Relative to the Equity Advisory Council, um that committee was formed or that council was formed and we have been meeting twice a month. And we are working to conduct a district self-assessment on the eleven dimensions of equity. To identify areas of strength and areas for growth and that work is still in process at this point. When it's completed, we'll certainly um be happy to come present uh findings for you. This year, um, we we had to suspend our typical learning walks. Um, as you know, previously, the entire district leadership would visit a school. And break into groups and visit a a small number of classrooms and then talk about what we saw in those classrooms. It's been a really valuable process for us as a team. And we are at the point now where we are ready to uh engage in the work this summer as a leadership team. To identify and putting in writing those elements um of quality instruction that we would like to see. In practice in all classrooms across the district. So that is something that we will complete that work this this summer during our leadership retreat. And be prepared to share that uh information with teachers when they return in the fall. We did as um conditions um, you know, seem to become a little bit more stable in terms of our our. Safety protocols in place and um people feeling a little bit more comfortable, I think, with the safety of the building. We did a a different version of a learning walk, a smaller number of administrators. Visiting classrooms for an entire grade level. Looking at a specific area, maybe literacy instruction or math instruction. The team of administrators would meet prior, they would discuss. Potential focus areas that that they would want to look for as they uh visited a classroom, they would come to an agreement on. What they were going to look for in their visits, they would go make those visits, they would debrief with each other afterwards. And they would also invite the entire team of teachers that they visited to engage in a debrief conversation as well. And just today, in our instructional leadership team, um, this one of our um administrators shared that. In visiting a classroom that had been visited during that instructional round. They saw that one of the teachers who had been visited in that instructional round actually has taken. Reflected on the feedback from that debrief and taken it and applied it in the classroom already. This is a really powerful tool for changing practice in the district. So next year, when it is safe to do so, we will re- resume the learning walks district wide. Because I do think it is very beneficial for high school administrators to visit the primary school and see instruction in action there because. As you know, for the last uh few years since I've been here. The entire team engages in prioritizing budgetary need as we develop a budget. So it's really valuable for them all to get to see instruction in action in each of the schools. So that they have a context when we're having conversations about needs at each building as we're developing and prioritizing a budget. However, this smaller, more targeted um instructional round model will also continue. Uh, because it brings a different level of benefit. Um, so we will expand practice next year to re-initiate that uh learning walk district wide. But also these instructional rounds um as well. Upon arrival uh in in the district, our new Title One Coordinator conducted an assessment of current practice K five. Uh, she was able to do that largely before we even opened school uh for staff and and students, just by conducting interviews. Um, and she was able to um. Better plan for how to write the grant proposal for our title grants. To make sure that we were better meeting the needs that that existed. And you know, we have purchased some additional Lucy Cockens units of study to be used at the primary school. As well as a resource for literacy instruction. We know that phonics is um an area of priority, uh that it's an area that we will continue to to work on, particularly at the K two level. Um, we will continue in grade one of a focus in phonics, reading and writing. And in grade two and three, a focus on reading and writing. And in grades four and five, some additional focus in reading. All of this is uh mapped out in those uh scope and sequence documents as well. And as you know, uh and we've brought forward, we are looking at assessment data, we are conducting. Local, internal, district, benchmark assessments, and we are um. Analyzing the results in in a variety of ways, at a building level, at a grade level. At a classroom level and at an individual student level. Looking at all of this data better um informs uh actions that might need to be taken to impact student performance. We are currently um also. Looking for a consultant to partner with us uh to engage the district. In our equity work. Um, and this equity lens, this consultant is really more um in the context of culture, shifting. Districtwide culture with an equity lens and um truly uh an equity lens. Really is a very student centered lens because essentially when we're talking about equity, we're talking about. Do we know what each student needs in order to access their learning? Um, so again, we're looking to bring somebody in to help facilitate that work district wide. Uh, we're we're still vetting uh possible consulting groups. Um, but we can update you when we when we find one that we think uh meets the needs of the district. In case I did not mention, these instructional rounds, uh which the the admin team are referring uh as sweeps. Uh, those are happening um across the district in each building. And they, as I said, uh that's something that we've found to be very valuable already and we will definitely continue um to do that work. This year, the, you know, looking at um our scheduling and how we use staff and uh time within the school day. The primary school in Turkey Hill this year worked to create a specials rotation. That would allow for them to share some specialists uh music art. Um, we, as you know, also um. Conducted a an analysis of time on learning and we are going to take a deeper dive and uh potentially be um. Revising existing schedules, particularly at the K five level. Um, to maximize instructional time during the school day, we think that that will be impactful as well. And I think, you know, um. Each school this year worked uh really well, the the administrators with the teachers to determine. What should a hybrid model look like at our grade level for our school? Um, and I think, you know, everyone should be commended because they did a really good job and they. Continued to take the feedback that was coming in from staff and students and families. And making adjustments uh where necessary for improvement. And you know, it was a work in progress, making adjustments throughout the course of the year. Um, but I I do want to make sure that, you know, I acknowledge the fact that um. The administration worked really well with the teachers in each of their buildings. Um, to arrive at a schedule that was that was workable for their grade level. Relative to um teaching and learning, transforming teaching and learning priority two. Establish a district wide rigorous and multi-phase hiring process. Um, obviously, this year hiring process had to be uh morphed a little bit because we were conducting interviews largely uh via Zoom. Um, but we we are working in a direction to um. Develop a written outlined um hiring process. Each currently each posted position now has a hiring manager. Um, the hiring standards, including things like licensure, um internal candidate review, reference checks. Um, all of those things must be completed before a recommendation is brought forward to the superintendent's office for a hire. Um, Mr. Cassidy also conducts annual educator license audits. He initially annually conducts one in January and anyone um with an expiring license before. You know, the next the the next school year, uh he does alert those staff. That they do have a license that will be expiring in the coming months. And he also um stays in touch with them, providing them reminders. Um, until such time as they've informed him that they have um updated or renewed a license due to expire. So, again, I want to thank Mr. Cassidy for that, I think it's a great benefit for our teachers, actually. Um, yes, we have an obligation to ensure that we're hiring licensed teachers. But I do think it's a great benefit for the teachers to have a district level reminder, um it is easy to forget. Um, you know, oh, you know, thi- this is the year that I am I'm due to renew a license. Um, so it it is much appreciated um by me that that this process is in place. So thank you very much to Mr. Cassidy for that. Uh, relative to priority three, um, under teaching and learning is creating that model of high quality professional development. And we've already covered a lot of ground on how that's working. I I will say that the um Professional Development Committee uh right from the start was really, they. Gelled really well as a solid team and they've done some really great work. Some of the work that they've been doing um late last year and into this year. Is defining a process and criteria for facilitating uh book studies. So, you know, it's it's not something that we just read a book and we'll chat about it and some people contribute to the conversation and maybe others don't. It's a much more structured type of professional development. And that's really in order for us to be able to vouch for the quality of the experience. Because we would be awarding PDPs for that experience. So, we actually, I believe, today or tomorrow, um, our very first book study group gets underway. Uh, so we're we're interested to get feedback from that process to see how that went and make adjustments accordingly. Um, as you know, through the feedback we were getting from our teachers. We also made adjustments to the school calendar this year to add additional early release. Uh, professional development days to the calendar. Um, we we added eight additional days where students reported in the morning. And were released early so that teachers could work in the afternoon. But we also added two days that we changed to a remote Monday schedule. And we ran a remote Monday schedule that entire week heading into the Christmas holiday. So teachers, again, two additional days there for prep, planning and um, you know, preparing to transition to. Uh, incorporating live streaming. Um, so there has been a lot of support, I think, this year uh around uh professional development for our staff. And we do um, we do have a plan to continue to collaborate with North Middlesex. Um, on a joint conference day again next fall. Relative to our communication and operations plan. Um, we've been updating uh and revising some man- manuals uh as district documents. Uh, including our special services procedure manual, that that update is something that happens in an ongoing way. As um guidance or regulations around special ed change uh or practices, best practices change. Uh, the manual is updated in an ongoing way. We continue to, you know, have our school advisory council meetings, our PACSEL and PTO meetings. In an ongoing way, uh and collaborate back and forth and support the needs of of either the parent groups uh that are being serviced there or. Um, even working jointly with our PTO to assist them uh in being successful in facilitating their meetings, recruiting new members. Uh, and promoting some of the uh fundraising events that they run that benefit the school. Uh, this summer, we're we're scheduled, we've already scheduled a a team building and communication workshop for the athletics department. Uh, there'll be a half day in June and another half day in August before the season opens for the fall. The the athletic director does bring together the coaches for each season and has a meeting with those coaches. However, there really isn't an opportunity for the entire athletic department, coaches in all seasons to come together as a department. Uh, so this will be a first time opportunity and again, we're going to focus on the team building. Um, building relationships between coaches who may not know each other because they don't coach in the same season. And having a conversation and an outcome relative to improving communication. Uh, improving communication between AD and coaches, between coaches and their assistant coaching staff, between coaches and their athletes or their their families. Um, the broader community, so on and so forth, so. We we're hopeful that uh a structured plan for roles and responsibilities for communication. And a plan for um how parents and students, student athletes can approach in the appropriate. Uh, chain of communication, any any uh questions, concerns they may have. Uh, so having that more clearly articulated, I think, will be beneficial for our our families. Definitely for our student athletes, our coaches and our AD, I think. So, we're looking forward to to that workshop this summer. As you know, uh, we had to modify how we conduct business. Uh, we we had to transition to models that allowed for electronic signatures. You're familiar with the ways in which we modified things so that you could all sign warrants on a regular basis. Uh, we have been working with and have contracted with DocuSign. So um, you should be seeing that relatively soon. It, it will replace our Google system for signing warrants. And I think that you will find that it's much easier and much more streamlined. And I do believe it will be quite a, a time saver for, for each of you um, as we move forward with that. We, we also want to provide an update that town hall has updated their procurement manual um, and training meetings are being planned before the end of the school year relative to the updated training manual uh, or procurement manual. And the training would be for secretaries, principals, um, directors, class advisors, because they often have purchases related to fundraising events and, and so forth for the different classes. Um, so that is uh, an update that has occurred and will be completed this year. And we are going to continue to explore software uh, changes. Potentially, there are software platforms out there that might be more efficient to conduct some of our business. I know that we are looking at an HR module in Power School that would um, allow us to better, uh, more conveniently uh, track such things as um, credit accruals towards uh, uh, an educational uh, lane change for, for our staff, course reimbursements, et cetera. Um, no decision's been made, but we are exploring that, that currently. Um, and this year, our social workers um, piloted the SNAP program that our nurses use to uh, to track their medical notes uh, for students that they see. No decision yet has been made as to whether or not we will bring on our social workers to utilize SNAP for, for next year. Uh, so that decision is still pending. Under cultivating uh, culture and climate, we are working to make sure that, you know, at the high school level, the high school administration is meeting regularly with um, student advisory council, department heads, staff at faculty meetings. At the high school level, uh, the, the administration in response to the feedback that we've been hearing from students for the last couple of years, uh, the administration has continued to uh, require a homework-free winter break with the exception of advanced placement classes um, or long-term assignments that might, uh, you know, tr- occur uh, over um, a holiday break. We are currently uh, thinking that we might uh, create a team um, to look at educational research and practice. Review current uh, research, compare that to our current practice and make recommendations for things that we may want to change uh, based on, on research in, in our current practice. So that's something that um, we're in conversation about and uh, nothing's been formalized yet. But, but it is the direction that we are uh, working towards. Um, we continued as best we could to support families. This year, um, we offered uh, access to the MOC uh, parent cafes. You know that we started that kinship caregivers program. We have continued to um, look at tiered behavioral supports. We did, we did dial back on what we had anticipated that we would be looking to do in terms of professional development at Turkey Hill to expand um, what work we had done at the primary school into the Turkey Hill. Uh, as you know, this year with a much smaller class size, we had uh, experienced fewer uh, such incidents. Uh, they really were limited to students in certain subsets. And with the additional social worker support, we were able to meet needs of, of kiddos that um, needed that level of support as well. And we've already covered the fact that we've, we established those behavioral health support teams in each school this year uh, to better support students, uh, make sure that they had the resources and supports that they needed. We also, um, our high school guidance and social workers um, attended a training for C-Bits and uh, you might remember that Jamie Millet did do a presentation that included uh, reference to that training. That training, C-Bits is cognitive behavioral intervention for trauma in schools. That was back in the fall. Um, and tier two groups have, have been piloted. So we will continue down that uh, road as well. As you know, we're looking to be able to evaluate school climate. Typically with MCAS administration, uh, there's what they call a vocal survey and that's uh, for students to complete and give some feedback on uh, their perception of their school climate uh, and culture. As you know, no MCAS administration last year, so no vocal survey uh, was conducted, so no data on that front. Um, we did however, conduct surveys throughout the year uh, of students as well as uh, families and, and staff relative to how things were going for them this year. So we do have some uh, sense of um, how pe- how people are feeling, both students and staff about the climate uh, of the school. And uh, we are currently working to identify a valid measure, uh, a climate survey for schools that, that has been vetted and deemed to be a valid survey. Uh, once we uh, secure that tool, we'd look to administer that in every school to get um, a baseline uh, data or what areas we may need to work on in individual schools to address the needs in individual schools in an attempt to continue to develop and foster a positive climate and school culture. Because we all know that when teachers are happy coming to work, students are happy to be in the classroom. When you're happy, you're learning more. So we want to make sure that we're providing the right kind of environment uh, for the best possible teaching and learning. So again, that is something that we are actively working on currently, but no tool yet has been identified. Relative is to priority two, under that cultivating culture and climate, fostering a culture of learning and data use. I think, I think it's been evident in the presentations uh, provided to you this year that we are indeed using tools to gather appropriate data and analyze that data and make adjustments based on the data to better meet the needs of students, to uh, close any learning gaps that might be evident, to identify um, areas in the curriculum that may need to be um, reviewed, enhanced uh, and so on. As you know, um, we had a common goal district-wide this year relative to student learning and assessment and data use to make adjustments to practice. Um, and uh, the, the principals report that um, progress is being made at the teacher level on all of those uh, goals uh, individuals a- aligning with the goals that were offered as a district-wide goal. We also have been uh, promoting practices of a professional learning community. We have uh, more frequently utilized protocols, protocols for looking at student work, um, protocols for um, analyzing data, protocols for book studies and, and so on. Um, we do use protocols even within the instructional leadership team. Uh, as an example, one of the things that we're going to focus uh, more of our instructional leadership team time to next year would be using consultancy protocols uh, where, you know, we might present a dilemma. One of the members of the team might present a dilemma and the other uh, members of the team uh, process through that, offer uh, suggestions or different perspectives uh, for the individual who's presenting the dilemma. So we are making uh, some pretty good progress in that direction, I think. And we developed this year a written uh, truancy prevention plan um, that was also uh, provided for you as well. And it takes us through a process of when to contact home, when to involve um, a social worker, when to involve our SRO, when to be making home visits, when to be filing with the courts uh, to ensure that, that parents are also um, providing uh, the necessary supports to get their kids to school so that they can be learning. So that has been fully outlined and is in writing at this point. So, and is in practice uh, with administrators across the district. Um, as you know, we've, we have uh, purchased assessment tools. And we have been using them. We are reevaluating and I mentioned this prior. Uh, we're, we're likely moving to use iReady as an assessment tool even at the six through eight grade level. This year, we had been using the iXL platform, but iReady actually provides much better um, data uh, that can be disaggregated in a variety of ways. We find that it's um, more impactful data. Uh, so we'll be making that shift as well. And again, we're, we're seeing the use of data, all kinds of data, attendance data as an example, uh, performance data, behavioral data in the context of our uh, TST process. That's our academic referral process for potential added supports or interventions for students. Our 504 meetings involving more data, IEP meetings, uh, special ed staff meetings are routinely um, based around data use. Our teachers are sharing assessment data with the parents and engaging in dialogue with parents about their students' assessment data. Um, teachers are talking to each other in the hallway. Teachers are stopping administrators and talking about the most recent uh, reports to come out from an assessment. Uh, so we, we are seeing interest amongst parents to, to access the data for their students and um, teachers and administrators across the district have really embraced um, using data in this way. They've found it to be very beneficial. We are also currently looking to create a, a way to archive and manage all kinds of data, right? So we have reading assessment data. We have math assessment data. We have attendance data, et cetera, et cetera. Um, so we're, we are actually pursuing um, an analytics tool that um, we will be able to customize and import uh, the data that, that we want to be at our fingertips so that we can look at a variety of data points for individual students um, and group by class or grade and sort um, and analyze as well. So that again, is going to be another beneficial tool to continue our work with um, data use, making it readily available uh, to teachers and to administrators. Just to note that on a priority three for cultivating culture and climate, um, that was focused around core values. Um, we really do need to be able to engage in dialogue around core values and it really would be beneficial, I think, when we can be back together in person to engage in those kinds of conversations. But I see this core value work also being tied to the work that we will initiate with the consultant next year on climate. So this work is going to, um, I, I imagine be uh, in tandem with, with this work as we get underway with the consultant next year. So uh, n- no work has been done on this particular action plan. It had not been planned to be worked on um, at this particular point in time, but just know that it is, it is now moving up uh, on the radar uh, as we move forward for next year. And um, relative to our equity access achievement and opportunity for all students, um, priority one was our uh, implementation of tiered systems of supports for social, emotional, behavioral and academic needs. And I think, um, you know, we've demonstrated this year that we have really structured interventions. We've hired some additional tutoring staff uh, with the title one director coordinating a lot of it with additional data that even the, the principals are um, overseeing some of this additional intervention time. So it, you know, it is a work in progress, but uh, it is underway and uh, we expect that it will continue uh, to grow as we move forward. Relative to equity access achievement and opportunity, priority two, which was evaluating the current status of equity across the district. The um, the Equity Advisory Council uh, has been formed. We've been meeting twice a month this year. Um, we are looking at the eleven dimensions of equity and data reports that are available through the Department of Ed and other data points as well uh, to assess the district against those eleven dimensions. Um, we're going to identify uh, areas that we may be doing well and areas that we want to target for growth. And again, working with a consultant, um, that work will also continue. Additionally, um, we've been uh, trying to have a written protocol for um, our TST process that is unified across the district. So we've been working on that this year as well as um, thinking about the roles and responsibilities of staff within the context of a 504 meeting as an example. In terms of uh, consistent 504 plan development. We've purchased resources as well uh, relative to 504 plans for our staff. Um, there is uh, an updated 504 plan handbook that is um, being developed um, currently uh, with, with also consultation from the legal team to make sure that uh, you know, what we've outlined is consistent with the law. We just completed this week uh, professional development for um, for the, the staff involved in 504 as a process. Uh, that professional development was provided by um, one of the school district attorneys. We're also looking at our IEP protocols and updating those. We have been working to establish entrance and exit criteria for programs, uh, uh, special ed programs in the district uh, so that it's clear to teachers, parents, um, what makes one eligible for a certain program and when are they ready to exit the program? Uh, so that has been uh, work underway this year as well. We're also revising the D cap and that's the District Curriculum Accommodation Plan. That is a document that um, general educators uh, should be referencing regularly. It alerts uh, all of our staff to all of the resources that are available to them. Um, you know, for students at, at tier two or tier three need of, of support as well as, you know, the expectation for um programs in use for tier one. Um. The review of that D cap is happening in tandem with the review of the TST process. They really do go hand in hand. And we also, under Equity Advisory um Council and our um our departments uh and our libraries, we have been reviewing uh the curriculum materials that we have access to. Books that are in our library, books that are in our, in our bookrooms uh at the K five level. Uh, the books that teachers are using uh in the curriculum at the high school level have been reviewed. And we have been uh and will continue uh to be purchasing additional texts that represents uh more diversity in authors, in characters, and in cultures. And this is work that will uh be underway for the next couple of years uh as we uh do this audit of our curriculum with an equity lens um and make adjustments as needed. So there's an awful lot, there's an awful lot there. There's an awful lot of work that's been happening this year, even under uh the COVID uh conditions and the modified learning models and the adjustments that have been made uh throughout the year. We, we have not lost sight of the strategy. Um, and we have continued to, to work in that area, obviously, this year. Could there be a year that's more uh, you know, designed for transforming teaching and learning? That definitely was at the forefront of much of what happened this year. You, you obviously have seen the shift in culture around data use. We've been reporting around the culture for uh supporting the social emotional component um and the needs of our students. So those elements of the culture and climate work have been done. We did make modifications to the ways in which we were working to reduce paper flow and more digital processing. That was driven by the conditions that we're working under this year. Um, and the Equity Advisory did get underway this year, and we are looking at the curriculum resources that are available with a different lens. Um, so there is a lot of work that has happened in all pockets. Um, but I would say for next year, uh, the focus really is going to shift more toward um the climate and culture uh components of the strategy as it in hand, hand in hand with elements of that equity uh and access opportunity component of the plan. Those, those two pieces really do um align together really well. So again, next year, there will be more focus in that area. Any, any questions? I mean, I would just like to commend all of, all of the leadership staff that have continued to keep their, their focus on the work of the strategy and the teachers for engaging in the curriculum review work, et cetera. Um, uh, I, 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 I think that they've done an extraordinary job of um continuing the focus to move the district forward in spite of all the challenges that we've been uh dealing with for the last year plus. Um, but if you have any, any questions or comments, something I left out, maybe? I don't think so.
Fairly certain that's not the case. Committee, any questions? And, and just so the public is aware, this is, we as a committee have had a chance to meet with you and have heard around, um, have heard some of these artifacts um presented, you know, at different points in the year. We've had check-ins around this. You checked in not only at our public meetings, but as well as um on an individual meeting basis with us. So this is not, this is not new for us. Um, but you know, getting that sort of final update, you know, where things are at, at, you know, at this exact moment. Um, um, so I will leave it to the committee. If there are any other questions that, that you have not had the opportunity to ask or heard differently tonight that you have a question about. One thing I would comment on, it was great to hear where focus to next year is going because as much as we have, you know, been in this year and heard everything about this year, um, you know, there's always a reflective look ahead and to see that um, the leadership team is already in that reflective mode for growth um into next year um and, and best ways to continue to grow our district um with the focus on, on teaching and learning and um that's uh as a school committee, we represent students. So hearing that is, is always um, is a good thing for us.
And I think it's a good fit to start to focus on the climate and culture for next year because this year has been extraordinarily stressful for teachers. Um, it, it's been a challenging year and um I, I'm, I, I think that, you know, work, work on recognizing the stresses, moving past those stresses um and focused on, you know, making sure that we are student-centered, that we are looking through this equity lens. But honestly, the equity lens starts with the self-awareness. Um, so that's the kind of work that we're going to have to do across the district with our staff. It is going to be a multi-year process to shift the district in this direction. Um, and I, I do think that the climate surveys uh across the district uh might help us identify areas that are unique to each school that we want to continue to make some progress toward improving um perceptions and, and actual experiences for, for families, for students, for, for teachers and other staff. Um, I, I do think that this is really important. This, this year has put a strain, I think, um, on everyone. Um, and I, I just, I think it, it's perfect timing to prioritize uh re-establishing good relationships, opening dialogue um and, and recommitting everyone's focus to, to students, right? So that's where we're headed.
It's a good direction to be headed. Definitely a student-centered direction to be headed. Um, if there are no other questions from the committee, I will um thank you very much for, as always, a really comprehensive, clear, and detailed presentation on topic. So thank you and, and, and probably the most important topic. Um, or the most important look we've had, global look at the year that we've had. So thank you.
And I, I will also post um all of the uh, the action plans within the strategy. Uh, the things that I just reviewed for you here, uh, we'll post uh with, with updated notes um on the website as well so that they'd be accessible uh for, for the community to look at.
Absolutely. I think that's very important. Thank you. Um, public comment open to any topic that the school committee governs. Let's see, is there any, any public comment from the committee? All right, then we'll move on to our reports. Athletic advisory.
We've now met.
Finance committee.
Uh, the finance committee has met twice since we have met on the eighth of April and on the twenty-second. Um, at the meeting on April eighth, there was a discussion of the positions and salary reports. Um, and they found, um, there was much discussion on it. It is difficult to discuss all this funding um without the settled numbers, you know, um. That they did talk about school department raises and such. Um, and there was notated that the town manager does have voting, a voting seat on the negotiations committee. Um, however, Mr. Beardmore did state it's not the role of the finance committee to advise the town manager or the school committee on contracts. Um, but they would like supporting information after negotiations to show that these are fair and equitable um contracts and decisions. But this topic would be revisited. Um, the capital planning committee said that they were recommending a twenty thousand dollar minimum for um submission to the capital planning. There was a comment from Mr. Jeffries requesting that students might be able to do minutes as public service for different committees that require, that are having trouble getting the minutes taken. Uh, the town manager said that she felt that um students' attendance at these meetings were probably not reliable enough to depend on for the public record. At the Thursday, um, April twenty-second meeting, it was announced that Mrs. Soroka will not be seeking another appointment. So there will be two open seats on the finance committee for those people that like to have their pencils sharpened and their calculators ready. Um, they are looking for two more people for this committee. Um, Ms. Birchfield weighed in on the position salary reports discussion because she was not in attendance on the eighth of April. And she thought it was very helpful to have um the ideas of comparable communities for all the different town contracts to work with. Um, and she did comment on um a good working relationship with the school committee. There was a discussion about um the town meeting, uh Passios building article being brought to town meeting without a solid number. There was some concern about that, that the, it's in the warrant without a number there. Um, there was a discussion regarding need to forecast debt out for ten years. The finance director stated that the overall revenues are up from fiscal twenty, that the fiscal twenty-one budget should be no problem um as far as finishing out the year, and that the free cash for next year should be fine. The next meeting will be on Thursday, the twenty-ninth.
Thank you. Uh, PTO.
Uh, the PTO met on Monday, April twelfth. Um, they appointed people for the teacher appreciation committee. They reported that the virtual science fundraiser kits were delivered. Um, and I'll probably get an update on how that went at the next meeting. Um, we went over survey results regarding the future PTO boards and sustainability of PTO leadership. There was a long question and answer session for parents interested in running for PTO executive board positions. Uh, we went over how to become a formal member of the PTO, and the next meeting is Monday, May tenth.
Thank you. School councils, the primary.
Uh, we met on Monday, April twelfth. Uh, they are focusing on going back over routines such as hallway transitions and expectations, uh pickup and drop off needed to make some adjustments uh by opening the doors ten minutes early in the morning and opening a little earlier for dismissal times to be able to get the kids out the door and keep traffic flowing. Um, the place structure is open, so everyone is delighted. Uh, kids will be using sanitizer before using it, and uh the structure is going to be sprayed down at the end of every day. Uh, first and second grade report cards went out on Friday, April sixteenth, and look out for more information in the next upcoming weeks for parents to have the opportunity to provide input on placement for next year.
Thank you, Turkey Hill.
At Turkey Hill, we talked about MCAS coming up, um, also the, the new lunch layout, how they were doing lunch uh at Turkey Hill with everybody in. Um, we also talked about um the new positions from retirees or even the new assistant principal, how they're getting ready to interview for those positions. And also, we talked about how there's a, a big third grade coming up, and there's going to be six sections of that third grade class.
Middle school.
The middle school council met on Monday, and Mr. Santry reported that there were three hundred and fifty middle school students attending school on campus, which is ninety percent of enrollment. There are thirty-seven students who are still remote. The students are doing well with mask wearing and social distancing, but reminders are still needed at lunchtime as they are middle school students who like to chat. Um, a hundred and forty-two students have attained high honors or honors. The MCAS will be held, well, we already went over that. I don't have to do that again. Um, one session per content area per grade level. Um, because of the, this new format, they are able to test all the students simultaneously, which they haven't been able to do before. So um they're looking forward to see, to, to running that to see how smoothly everybody taking the test all at the same time will go. Um, there will be iXL testing on the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth of May. And student handbooks, we will discuss at the next meeting. The spring benchmarks will be used to develop our school improvement plans for the fall presentation. Summer school is taking shape, and they're beginning to talk about staff. Qualified students will be invited, and Mr. Santry reports being absolutely happy with the students, the teachers, and the parents at the middle school.
Thank you. And my high school.
Uh, we met, well, actually, the meeting was canceled, but I met one-on-one with Mr. McGrath on April twelfth. Um, so this was a full week after the new return. Um, the number of fully remote students at the high school actually went down. We're now at about sixty-five out of four hundred and sixty fully remote. Um, they're continuing with traffic flow patterns during passing time, like still working on that. Um, they're using the auditorium for study hall so that students can remain six feet apart during study. Um, and in some classrooms, students are closer to three feet apart, but um they're as far as they can get. Um, for lunch, which was a concern, they're using the lunchroom hallways right outside the lunchroom, middle school and high school project rooms, and they rented a tent right outside the cafeteria for lunchtime. Um, this is great because obviously students need to have masks off to eat lunch. Um, they split up the administration team, guidance, resource officer, and athletic director, so there's adequate lunchroom supervision. Um, they did have to change some drop-off and pickup protocol because of student parking numbers. Um, they're using Memorial Drive by the library. Uh, Mr. McGrath said parents have been great, and it seems to be working well. Um, grades close the beginning of this month, and um they appreciate the parents and students um being forgiving on grades, kind of trickling in a little later than usual because late work has been being accepted more due to the circumstances. Um, as of the beginning of this month, they were still planning on graduation in the same model as last year and on a senior week with slightly modified versions of the usual festivities like motorcade and the senior breakfast. Um, and our next meeting is Tuesday, May fourth.
Busy, busy. Uh, capital planning met the sixth of April. Um, the biggest thing was um reviewing the FY twenty-two capital plan, including the town manager um had made addition of two prioritized projects, one of which was the Marshall Park Master Plan and um DPW vehicle. Um, and also, as um Ms. Arshinbo had pointed out in her FinCom report, um, capital planning is recommending uh upping the amount for uh what is considered a capital project to twenty thousand dollars. That, that amount has not changed in a long, long time. Um, and projects um at a smaller amount could be personally requested to the town manager or smaller ones hopefully can be um worked into, worked into regular um operating budgets. Um, and there is um, there is no plan to next meeting, likely a wrap-up, um, some sort of meeting after a town, uh, town meeting. And wellness advisory.
Uh, we did not meet because uh Mrs. McGuire has her hands full at the moment, um, but we'll be meeting on May eleventh.
Paccel. Paxal.
Our next meeting is on May 6th at 6:00 P M.
And Passios Building Design.
Yeah, we met over vacation on the 21st. We did talk about the, the presentation for Saturday, worked on the slides. And I would say to the finance committee, there should be numbers there for them on Saturday. So they'll be excited about that, even though they don't get to see them early. And yeah, I, I think one of the things is that the, the number is a little high and I think, I think a lot of people were, were wondering, okay, well, how much would it cost to, to just totally build new? So that was one of the things that the committee has been looking into. And we'll hear about that on Saturday too, about getting an estimate what a new building would even cost if we did tear down and, and build new.
Thank you. And topics for future discussion. Anyone? All right, then I will take a motion to bring us to executive session. Adjourn, adjourning and not to return. Mr. Leighton.
I'll make a motion to go to executive session and adjourn from there.
And with that executive session, we will conduct strategy in preparation for negotiations with union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining or contract negotiations not to return to regular session. And a second, Ms. Kelly.
I will second that motion and I will just make sure we're just staying on this link. Okay. Thank you.
Ready for roll call? Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton? Mrs. Arshambo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes.